Welcome to this meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council here at Westminster's Historic City Hall. This building was originally an estate built in eighteen forty-two by Colonel John K. Longwell, and was purchased by the city in nineteen thirty-nine. The council typically meets here on the second and fourth Mondays of every month. Please note that the council meetings are open to the public here at City Hall and are also available in strange line on the city's YouTube page as well as on the Community Media Center's channel and website. And I thank the Community Media Center for their partnership in ensuring the public has access to these meetings. As a courtesy to everyone, please take a moment to silence your cell phones or electronic devices that may interrupt the meeting. Thank you. Now we'll begin, as we do every meeting, with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, united for the liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. Hard copies of the agenda are also available here in the front of the room for those of you in attendance. We'll start out with a statement regarding a closed session. The council mayor and council had a closed session on May ninth, twenty twenty-five, in accordance with the general provisions of Article in annotated three dash three oh five C subsection two of the End Code of Maryland. And with that objection, it is noted that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect the common council met in a closed meeting on Friday, May ninth, twenty twenty-five at one oh six P M pursuant to the general provisions, Article Sections three dash three oh five B one to discuss appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluations of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction. Any other personal matters that affect one or more specific individuals. The common council took no official action during this meeting. The meeting was adjourned at five thirty P M. So we'll now move to presentations. Mayor Becker.
Thank you, sir. All right, here we go. All right, I'd like to ask Councilmember Gregory Peccararo to please come up and take a place beside me. So I'd like to read a mayoral proclamation honoring Gregory Peccararo, June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas Greg Peccararo has dedicated twenty-three years of service to the City of Westminster Common Council, demonstrating a commitment to public service, community engagement, and civic leadership. And Greg Peccararo has served with distinction and honor as council president for the City of Westminster from May twentieth, twenty nineteen, to May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. And Greg Peccararo has provided presidential leadership, guidance, and advocacy for two mayors and two city administrators for the City of Westminster. And Greg Peccararo's expert knowledge of Robert's Rules of Order and the Guide to Parliamentary Procedures provides an ability to lead a meeting like no other. And Greg Peccararo conducts himself with integrity, fairness, and respect for the diverse needs and perspectives of the community. And during his tenure, Greg Peccararo has contributed to many city enhancements, which include the renovations of the city administration building, the Westminster City Municipal Pool, the historic clock tower, the water reuse planning and state approval, and the Wakefield Valley Park and clubhouse. And Greg Peccararo provides a steady hand as it relates to day-to-day business of the council and is measured and thoughtful when considering difficult issues. And now, therefore, I, Dr. Mona Becker, mayor of the City of Westminster, join the common council, city staff members, and the residents of the City of Westminster, do hereby extend our sincere gratitude and appreciation to Greg Peccararo for his dedicated service as council president and his significant contributions to the community are acknowledged, and the lasting impact of his leadership is recognized. Before you say anything, we also have a small gift of our appreciation from the council. Yes. Would you like to talk or say anything about that?
The complete story or just the artist's name and Stephanie Madison? So Stephanie Madison. So there's some connections. I spoke with Stephanie and she came out and did a pencil drawing of what you see in front of you. And then that is the original. You have the only original.
Yes, the only original.
Our prints are available for everyone else, but you have the only original. And she took care of that within like a week and a half.
That's pretty special. Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
Just briefly, thank you to my colleagues for the last thing you've honored me by allowing me to be your president. I certainly enjoyed it and I consider it one of the great honors of my time on the council to get to do that. I'm looking forward to spending the next few years sitting next to my good friend, Council President Cavaci, as he takes up those responsibilities, which I'm sure he will equip extremely well. And very excited to return to my previous role where I get to ask a lot of questions instead of trying to stop people from asking a lot of questions. And it's gonna be a great couple of years under his leash. Thanks very much to everybody.
It's awesome.
Thank you.
Just to plug Lindy McNulty, how can you frame it? That's right, yes, okay, so this was art.
Automatic.
All right, at this point, I'd like to invite Alyssa Levin. So this is a mayoral proclamation recognizing attorney Alyssa Levin on June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas Alyssa Levin is a municipal attorney with nearly three decades of experience representing cities and towns throughout Maryland. And Alyssa has been active in the Maryland Municipal League and the Maryland Municipal League's Attorney Association for many years and has served as a liaison to the Maryland Municipal League's Legislative Committee. And Alyssa Levin's commitment to providing legal services has earned her the respect and admiration of colleagues and municipal officials throughout the state of Maryland. And Alyssa Levin has provided the City of Westminster with legal expertise for over fifteen years as a city attorney. And Alyssa Levin has represented and guided the City of Westminster in a variety of matters, including reviewing contracts, grants, personnel matters, Public Information Act requests, and Open Meeting Act regulations. And Alyssa's legal counsel and guidance have been instrumental in navigating complex legal matters, ensuring the city's interests are protected. And now, therefore, I, Dr. Mona Becker, mayor of the City of Westminster, join the common council and city staff members in extending our sincere gratitude and appreciation to Alyssa Levin for her services to the City of Westminster, and we wish her well in her future endeavors. Well, on behalf of the mayor and council, this is for you as.
Very lovely. Thank you so much.
Would you like to say anything before?
I'd just like to say thank you to all of you for giving me here for so long and that we appreciate it. It was lovely working with all of you. And I know that we will cross paths for the number of years yet to come. And I'll be looking forward to that.
Great, thank you. Yes.
Now we'll continue on with our business. We'll move on to meet minutes. We'll now consider the approval of minutes. We have six meeting sets of meeting minutes to consider. The mayor and council council budget work session of May one, twenty twenty-five, the mayor and common council budget work session of May seventh, twenty twenty-five, the special mayor and common council meeting on May ninth, twenty twenty-five, mayor and common council closed meeting minutes of May ninth, twenty twenty-five, the mayor and common council meeting minutes of May twelve, twenty twenty-five, and the mayor and common council annual organizational meeting of May nineteen, twenty twenty-five. I have a motion to approve all the minutes. Mr. Peccararo with the motion. Dayhoff with the second. Is there any discussion related to the item? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. We'll move on to the consent calendar. We have five items on the consent calendar this evening. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve all five items on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Councilman Huff. You, Councilwoman Gilroy, we have a second for her. All in favors, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and the consent calendar is approved. We'll move on to reports. Report from the mayor. Mayor Becker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to start by saying thank you to the American Legion Post Number Thirty-One for their organization of a very successful Memorial Day parade and a meaningful service at the Westminster Cemetery. All the events surrounding Memorial Day this year were well-attended, including the parade and the ceremony at the cemetery, but also the Art Center that afternoon on May twenty-fourth had an afternoon with Mary Showman. It was a wonderful afternoon of insight into Mary Showman, who led a Declaration Day parade in eighteen sixty-eight, which eventually became Memorial Day and Westminster's Memorial Day Parade. The Carroll County Historical Society on Main Street in Westminster has a wonderful display about Mary Showman on exhibit titled Civil War to Suffrage. It was pretty quiet until June first, when I emceed the annual Spring Girl Home Run event, five K in Westminster. I've had the honor of emceeding their events in Westminster for the last several years. It's always a lot of fun, especially if the sun is shining. They do go on raining or snow sometimes. This spring, there were about two hundred elementary and middle school girls running along as their coaches and running buddies to total about three hundred fifty participants. Main Street Business Run Art is also involved in assisting in these events, such as setting up the course and timing, ensuring safety, and offering encouragement. Also, I want to thank the Westminster Police Department for being on site to provide safety and assistance when needed. And I want to clarify that I am there only emceeding, not participating in the five K. Don't want anyone to think I'm doing a five K without you. Great, the farmer's market's in full swing.
You would always be doing it without me.
I am would probably be the only person who might come along and do one there. I have no desire to. Let's just make that clear. See what happens the next quarter. The farmer's market is in full swing. One of my favorite Saturday summer events. This past Saturday was also host to Art in the Park, which took place on the lawn right outside City Hall. And while the day started off a little rainy, it soon cleared and the sun shone for the afternoon. I'm looking forward to beer and barbecue for this upcoming weekend. But the morning before beer and barbecue starts, if you want to see some big deadlifts, six hundred pound, stop in at Westminster Frank and Conditioning for the Fourth Annual Deadlift for Dogs event. This event supports America's vet dogs, which places service dogs with veterans and first responders. And I will be announcing the event Saturday morning and cheering on the competitors. That is all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll now move on to reports from committees and liaisons. We'll start off the liaison to the Arts Council, Councilman Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Art in the Park was a great success. All the vendors reported being very happy with it. A lot of really good programming over at the Arts Council. Check the website for some additional information. The website's been recently revamped and it's an excellent website. That would be my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Economic and Community Development, Mr. Huff.
Mr. President, I will mention that one of the items that we've worked on in economic and community development is on the agenda tonight, which is the introduction of the ordinance numbered two zero two five oh one, Automobile Use Tax Amendment. And I just want to point that out as this is a good use of our committee system. I think, and Mr. President, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we discussed this in ECDC probably three or four times, kind of really refining it, really thinking about it. So the draft that you see here tonight that's being introduced is something that not only staff has put a lot of thought in, but ECDC has put a lot of thought in. So hopefully, not that it isn't subject to revision by this collective body. We're just introducing it tonight. But I think that's one of the great uses of our committee system is that by the time the draft gets to you, there has been a lot of fault put into it. So hopefully, you know, there's less modification needed at this level. So I just kind of wanted to highlight that because there's often, you know, when I'm asked, do I have a committee report? I don't really have anything to say. But tonight I do because we have an agenda item that we put a lot of work into on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huff, and I agree a hundred percent. You don't have reports often because a lot of things we do take many, many months to get done. We want to finance committee. Mr. Peccararo.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Finance Committee, you mentioned that also on the agenda this evening, we have a budget amendment. And I would just want to note that since we introduced it on May twelfth, there have been some revisions made to the item. And so the item we will be adopting tonight has a few changes that are principally in the at the beginning section, whereas clause itself, nothing material, but I just wanted to make sure that you all wear that to the. We'll be moving to adopt the amendment. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Personnel Committee, also, yeah, Mr. President, sorry.
Go ahead, force a habit.
Mr. Peccararo.
Put the G on the P. It's all right. Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing for the Personnel Committee.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, I do have a report. Get it up here in front of me. On May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, members of the Westminster Police Department attended annual Carroll County Chamber of Commerce Public Safety Awards where PFC Victoria Ash and PFC Jonathan Ray were both recognized. That's a very nice special event. It's great that they recognized that event. It's pretty big. May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, Melissa Palietas received her Police Officer First Class designation after successfully completing her probationary period. On June first, twenty twenty-five, members of the Westminster Police Department attended the Saint John's Catholic Church Priest on a Rooftop event supplying a police officer and a police cruiser for children to interact with and learn about local policing. I'm assuming no donuts at that one, like you used to get at the Dunkin' Donuts?
Probably not.
No? And tomorrow, myself, and I'm assuming there will probably be a few other folks sitting up at the dais that might be there, will be attending the Special Olympics Torch Run at McDaniel. That is all I have for that report. Now we'll move on to Public Works. Mr. Gilbert.
Public Works has been very busy the last week or two. They responded to several calls for service from the large storm that we had on May eleventh. Annual road striping was. They have been applying fresh paint to crosswalks throughout the city streets. Set up, performed traffic controls and cleaned up from the Memorial Day parade and installed the veterans banners on Main Street in Pennsylvania Avenue. So they are now adorning our street. So that is Public Works.
And Recreation and Parks.
And I will continue with that. And the Westminster Municipal Pool is finally open daily beginning June fourteenth. They were open for just the weekends, but now as of Saturday, they will be open every day from twelve P M to seven P M. Check out the scheduled classes, exercise classes that will be occurring also every day, I believe. And that's on our Parks and Rec website. Join us this Saturday also for the Beer and Barbecue Stroll. We're going to be crossing our fingers if there's no rain or storms until after the event is over. That will be taking place on June fourteenth from twelve to four. We're still in need of volunteers, so please consider lending a hand. And that is all I have for Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And finally, Technology Committee, Mr. Dayhoff.
I have a report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And we move on to council comments and discussions. We'll start with Mr. Peccararo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. First of all, I joined the mayor in, you know, saying that the Art in the Park event, that Saturday was very nice. It's one of my favorite events and one of the oldest we have in the city, even though it's not a city-sponsored event. Certainly, there's a lot of city engagement with making it happen, and it's always a pleasure to get out to visit that. Also, somebody else has done. I just wanted to welcome our new city attorney to joining us tonight. It's great to have him with us here as well. And finally, just wanted to chair with my colleagues that I was appointed by Governor Westmore to serve on the Maryland Advanced Air Mobility Advisory Council, which will be, you know, meeting over the next several months to develop a strategy for Maryland to take advantage of these new technologies and discuss how they'll be deployed around the state. And I will be serving in the local government seat on that body.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dayhoff.
I have no report this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
I have no report outside.
Mr. Huff.
The only thing I will mention is I have really enjoyed the farmer's market. I missed last, this past weekend because I was away, but I've been there every other weekend. I really encourage everybody to stop by. There are some new vendors there. And I have really enjoyed it every time I've been. And I've picked up a lot of great goodies that my family enjoys, so I encourage everybody to go. Thank you.
Absolutely. I have a couple of quick things I wanted to comment on. Echo Mr. Peccararo's comments about welcoming our new city attorney. I think we're all very excited. You know, you're a little bit outside of the box relative to city attorneys, and I think it's going to be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very excited about it. And looking forward to, you know, some new fresh stuff and hopefully a long tenure working with you. I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Gilbert for putting together that wonderful picture with Councilman Peccararo. I asked her if she would run point on putting the gift together, and she knocked it out of the park with things. Super cool. So thank you very much for doing that. And I'd like to thank Ms. Imhals and I'm sure some of her staff members for putting together those resolutions. They've well done. Appreciate your time and effort to make it better. I keep getting these warnings wanting me to update my computer. That's telling me with these things. Okay, so we'll move on. We have one bid to consider this evening. It'll be the approval of a warrant to EAC Archaeology, Inc. for a National Register. We have two. We do have two. I apologize. I did not put the right number. I do see this second one in here. Nomination update of Westminster Historic District in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and one dollars and forty-four cents. Director of Community Planning and Development Depot.
Thank you. Community Plan Development and Historic District Commission, in an effort to update the Westminster Historic District National Register nomination, pursued funding for the re-inventory of the National Register listed historic district. In addition to the historic district nomination update, the scope of the work of the project to research expanded topics such as the rural free delivery system, the area of Civil War history with specific attention to Corbett's Charge, and the history of the city's ethnic neighborhoods. The city was awarded a grant of thirty thousand dollars from Maryland Historic Trust, or MHT, to match the city's thirty thousand dollar funding for this project. The city worked together with MHT to issue RFP twenty-five fifteen as a mutually approved bid document in conjunction with the grant criteria. On April fourth, twenty twenty-five, the City of Westminster opened RFP twenty-five fifteen. On May sixth, twenty twenty-five, bids were publicly opened and read aloud. In total, three bids were received from EAC Archaeology, Inc. with a bid of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and one and forty-four cents, R K and K with a bid amount of one hundred eleven thousand, four seventy-eight and ninety-two cents, and Marcel Day with a bid amount of one hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy and eighty-one cents. MHT determined that all three bids met the criteria for the project and were acceptable for the Maryland Common Council to determine the bids that the city would consider to be the best valuable bidder. Community Plan Development recommend that the Maryland Common Council award RFP twenty-five fifteen to A E A C Archaeology, Inc. for the bid amount of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and one dollars and forty-four cents as the most valuable bidder for the project and available for any questions.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get the motion on floor and then we can discuss it and ask any questions. So do I have a motion to approve EAC Archaeology for fifty-nine, five oh one, forty-four?
So moved by Mr. Peccararo.
Second by Mr. Huff. Hey, let's open it up for discussion. Anyone have any questions?
I'm just thinking. My one comment is I'm excited that we're doing this. And so I think it's a great thing, and I'm really looking forward to reading the report when it's all done.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Peccararo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Depot, so I think it's a terrific project too. I'm very pleased we're moving forward with this. But as a question, as a practical consideration, when the project is completed, we've got the R G I S database completed and all that, what will that mean to our planning process? How's that going to impact, you know, projects or development, you know, in areas that have been surveyed by this?
It won't impact anything. There's no regulatory standards for the historic district. What it does provide is a clear understanding of what the property has for archaeological review. If we want, naturally, it's something we do look at on occasion. If there's historic value to that property, we do try to work that into any proposed development or demolition. It also provides for further review of demolition of projects in historic districts so we can identify the properties that are valued. I'm thinking with terminology right now. But the database also, when we are doing reviews, it does provide, again, that quick understanding of a property. You can click on that property, get all the data about it, the history of that property, the historic district value of that property. So again, and that'll be also available to the public as well. We're from their IT department, so anybody can click on a property and view what this information is going to be providing.
Now, as we, over the next few years, develop, you know, some new standards, you know, for construction, you know, planning for downtown, you know, well, for the area this is going to cover, is it contemplated that we'll incorporate some protection for some of the, you know, more historic properties in this? Or, you know, are we just planning on continuing to adjust as an informational database?
I think for this right now, it's just an informational database for today. I know in the Historic District Commission's implementation plan, they do discuss elements of historic properties. Again, this is that first step of trying to meet with the Historic District Commission offered as an implementation strategy plan for the historic district.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I have all questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Huff.
Um, so when this is all done, Mr. Depot, I'll be able to go on the internet, look at a specific property, be able to pull up detailed information about the historic nature of that property. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. This will also, I would imagine, I, I think that's a wonderful resource because people that are potentially looking at buying a property, being able to easily access that information, whether we have our rules or regulations, will impact how they look at a property. Um, for, for some people at least. Um, I would imagine also this will be helpful um, to if I was applying for a historic tax credit to have updated information. Because right now the information we're blowing off of, I think, was something in the seventies or something like that. So this will be beneficial to the ability of certain property owners to seek some of, of the facade. I, I know we have facade, but you can also get, you know, historic tax credits related to facades as well. Um, so I would imagine this would be helpful in that regard as well. Correct?
Absolutely. As not only the city's historic tax credit, but also the states and the federal historic tax credits where it being in a historic district provides that property owner the information that they need when they're seeking a tax credit. And it can always be built upon. Um, we have demolition permit requirements in historic district, or the Historic District Commission does have to review it and they do require archaeological studies and further information about those individual properties, photos. Uh, I would see us also adding that information to those properties of anybody ever wanted to come back and try to recreate or re-establish that historic um, element.
And, and I think for councils, my feeling and, and not that we wanna go down a rabbit hole of, of this tonight, but you know, it is good to have that information and it's always something that we can talk about more. There's always, um, I know I'm getting ready to work on a pretty major renovation to a property uh, next door to me right now. And as we're really diving into it, there's this tension between there is certain things that I'd want to keep just because I want the historic nature of the property to be somewhat preserved. But then there's other tensions that come into play with the fact that this building is never gonna be a single-family house again. It's always gonna be apartments and I have to deal with lead compliances. So as much as I would love to keep the old windows, that's problematic when it comes to meeting the regulations or having a rental property. Um, and those kind of things, but I can get replacement windows that look very similar to what's there. But what I'm saying is, these are complicated issues when we're talking about, you know, historic properties and what to be group, what should be preserved or what shouldn't be preserved. Um, and not that conversation, not for tonight per se, but but having this information will be a great value and will be helpful to us going forward if we wanna have more of those kind of conversations.
Absolutely. And it does help with grant writing too. When we are looking for grants for the historic district, this is added information that would benefit those applications as well.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? I have one quick one. Um, so I wanna be clear on the finance side of this. So it is fifty-nine thousand and some change. We got thirty thousand in a grant. So are we able to apply the entire thirty thousand or is the fifty-fifty split of the fifty-nine and change?
It was a matching grant. We had thirty thousand in the city and we budgeted thirty thousand for the total of sixty thousand. So it still comes under what we anticipate.
Just slightly.
Yes.
So who wrote the grant for this?
Uh, it was uh, Melissa Thorne. Uh, wrote this grant and in cooperation with the historic trust and I believe Abby probably of possibly, maybe not this one, but.
And the Chair of H T.
And the Chair of H T C. Yes, I'm sorry. The Chair of H T C was very um, uh, instrumental in this grant application.
Appreciate you passing along our appreciation. I think this is getting more, as husband Huff alluded to, I think it's gonna turn out to be a lot more valuable than we realized over the years. Um, you know, you're referring to a study down in the seventies. Well, that's that's quite some time ago. So I think we're gonna get a lot of mileage out of twenty-nine thousand dollars that we're gonna spend on this. So it was great that we were able to get half of this funded by other people's money. Okay, hearing uh, all of that, if there are no other questions, we'll move on to calling the question. Uh, all those in favor of approving the award of fifty-nine, five oh one to E A C Archaeology, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? The ayes have it and the bid is approved. Second uh, bid for this evening is approval of the award of uh, Singh and Sons. Is that, uh, am I pronouncing that right? Singh and Sons Contracting LLC for City Park restroom renovations in the amount of fifty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to Director of Recreation Parks, Rupert.
Good evening. A fiscal year twenty-four program open space grant provides funding for the renovation of the City Park restroom building. The original infrastructure, although currently functional, marginally so, is outdated and inefficient. Built in nineteen seventy-four, upgrading the City Park restroom building is necessary for several reasons. It will address the facility's aging infrastructure by replacing deteriorated plus sinks, toilets, flooring, exhaust fans, fixtures and faucets. These improvements will also address the building codes and safety standards that have evolved significantly since nineteen seventy-four, such as the American With Disabilities Act, the International Plumbing Code and current electrical code requirements. The request for bids was posted on e-Maryland Marketplace on April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Four contractors responded with bids ranging from fifty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to one hundred fifty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. After reviewing the submissions, it staff determined that the lowest bid submitted by Singh and Sons Contracting LLC from Ellicott City, Maryland was the lowest, most responsible and responsive bid. References were checked and staff received favorable response regarding the company's timeliness, quality and work integrity. With that, staff recommends that the city award the bid to Singh and Sons Contracting LLC for fifty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for City Park restroom renovations.
Thank you, Ms. Rupert. Let's go ahead and get this uh, on the floor. Man motion to award Singh and Sons Contracting LLC uh, for fifty-four, nine fifty.
Motion approved.
Mr. Deahoff with the motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Gilbert, I think she got you. Uh, Ms. Gilbert with the second. Okay, are there any questions regarding this bid?
Mr. President.
Mr. Huff, I think was first.
Um, so I just wanna understand. So part of this money is, we're using program open space, not this, correct?
Correct.
Um, so the amount of program open space money, is that, do we have more than that that we can then use for other projects or how does that work?
We do. We have excess funding that can be reprogrammed for another city pro, city park.
Okay, got, I got you. So the, 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 the grant that we have will cover the full cost, but even though we're not using all that grant, we can repurpose it for other uses and for open space. Got you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Mr. Peckerero.
Thank you, Mr. President. So along those lines, so the grant was for like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is, you know, good, good money. And uh, the other bids were two and a half to, you know, three times what the winning bid was. So granted, we got an extra hundred thousand dollars that we can, we program to do something else, but, you know, so what do we attribute the significant difference in, in the bids? Because the city estimate must have been closer to the higher bids. Who ran with that?
So we actually received uh, very different estimates when we were deciding how much uh, funding to program for this particular project. Um, and with any project, a building of this age, um, there are many unknowns. There may be concealed conditions, uh, but we reviewed the bid. It seemed sufficient. Um, it included everything that we were requiring of this particular company. And um, when we checked references, they have done satisfactory work. So there's no reason for us to believe that this bid is inadequate or lacking in any way. Um, so there's no reason to not accept it.
All right. Bless you for having about a hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peckerero. Any other questions or comments? Again, thank you very much, Ms. Rupert, for finding other money, other people's money to use on this project.
I'm sorry, I do have one other question.
Yes, Mr. Huff.
So how many toilets and sinks are we replacing as part of the property with the layout of these restrooms?
So currently there are two toilets in each side and this, in order to achieve ADA compliance, would actually remove those two toilets on each side and we're creating one, well, we're creating in total two unisex restrooms, which will be fully combined.
The two unisex, so two handicap unisecs. So basically we're going from four total toilets to uh, two total, so how many sinks? One?
One.
Okay. I mean, just on a, yeah, I, this bid seems, the bid that you accepted seems reasonable. I mean, just done a, uh, two commercial.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. I think maybe the other people were just, maybe they were looking at what the grant figure was for. I don't know. But anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of awarding the grant for fifty-nine, fifty to Singh and Sons, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the bid. You want to say it, right?
Yeah.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Uh, the bid, uh, using grant, yes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any approach, opposed? Hearing none, the bid is awarded. Thank you, Ms. Rupert. Okay, we'll move on to ordinances. And I believe we have two of them. If I put this down right, but uh, they were short. Yeah, is that right?
Yeah.
All right. So we have a few ordinances this evening uh, to work on. Uh, the first one is introduction of twenty twenty-five dash oh one Automobile Use Tax Amendment. Do I need to read all of this?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll read it all. Thank. I didn't wonder if I'm getting the end of six hundred bucks a year.
Well, worth it. It's like just on a pill that last week.
Exactly. Uh, and ordinance of the Maryland Common Council of Westminster amending chapter one sixty-four zoning and subdivision of land of the code of the, of the city of Westminster, one sixty-four, three, one sixty-four dash three definitions and wording usage to add the definitions of automobile t, detailing shop, automobile repair and service shop, major, automobile and service shop minor, and automobile sales, and to replace the term service station with automobile service station to amend one sixty-four dash one twenty-one on-premise business signs and Article twenty special provisions, one sixty-four dash uh, through uh, dash one forty-nine automobile s, service station as well as the permitted use and or special exceptions used in the mixed-use infill zone, one sixty-four dash thirty-nine dot two, B business zone, one sixty-four dash forty-one and one sixty-four dash forty-two, D uh, D B downtown business zone, one sixty-four dash forty-five point eight and one sixty-four dash forty-five point nine, I R restricted industrial zone, one sixty-four dash fifty-four, I G general industrial zone, one sixty-four dash sixty-one and one sixty-four dash sixty-two, and N C neighborhood commercial zone, one sixty-four dash sixty-four point two, P one, glasses on here, planned industrial zone, one sixty-four dash sixty-six and one sixty-four dash seventy-five, the P R S C planned regional shopping center zone, one sixty-four dash one hundred and one sixty-four dash one oh one to reflect the newly defined uses. Holy cow. Director of Community Planning is developing.
Thank you.
The holy cow wasn't part of the gathering.
Can you read that story?
Thank you. Brian Ditto representing the Carroll County Commerce Center located in the city of Westminster Corporate Center Court contacted Community Plan Development regarding their desire to operate an automobile service shop use at the Commerce Center. The Commerce Center is own P I planned industrial zone and automobile service use is not identified as an allowed use in the P I zone. During their review of the zoning ordinance and the types of automobile-related uses from this request, um, the city administration and Community Plan Development determined that the automobile-related uses contained in the zoning ordinance do not reflect the array of such uses currently offered to automobile owners and that the city should clearly identify which automobile-related uses are permitted and which zones. Consistently refer to the uses established and define each use. Staff identified several automobile-type uses in the zoning ordinance that should be amended, deleted or added in certain zoning districts and determined that uses should be amended and added to provide consistency and clarity of differing automobile use type uses. Staff drafted proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance to address the automobile-type uses and presented the amendments to the Economic Development Committee. At its meeting, the E C D C recommended that the Community Plan and Development forward draft ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one Automobile Use Tax Amendment to the Maryland Common Council for introduction. Staff recommend that proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh one be introduced for consideration by the Maryland Common Council and refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review and recommendation to the Maryland Common Council. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Depot. Let's go ahead and get a motion on the floor, please. Anyone have a motion for the, uh, introduction or adoption?
Introduction.
Introduction. Yep, introduction of.
I'll make a motion for the introduction of ordinance uh, number uh, two zero two five oh one Automobile Use Tax Amendments.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Huff. You have to read the whole thing. Thank you, Mr. Huff, for that motion. Do I have a second? I have a second for Ms. Gilbert. Okay, let's open it up for discussion. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Mayor Becker.
Um, before we talk about this, as uh, Councilmember Huff, um, that stated earlier, um, along with uh, Council President Kabachi, that this has gone through the uh, E C D C um, committee quite some time. I just wanna take a moment to say thank you to Council President Kabachi for offering his valuable insight on everything automotive when we were drafting uh, this ordinance. I don't think that we would have had the sort of clear thinking or the nuanced discussions we had about automobiles and vehicles and the types of services that are provided, which are more than I thought ever could be, um, that we had to encompass in this. And I think that his experience has made this ordinance um, much better than what it, it would have been. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's uh, see how this goes for the next year or two. Will we find a bunch of holes in it that we'll realize anyway? So great.
But that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Huff.
I, I will echo uh, the banger's comments. Uh, very much appreciate your, your input here. The, the bigger thing I do wanna mention though is, you know, our zoning code, we definitely need to update our zoning code. But I think this is a prime example of how, you know, we try to operate in the city of Westminster. Something was brought to our attention uh, by a business owner. Um, you know, we gave it some thought. Um, and we always have the ability to do tax amendments to our current zoning code. Um, believe me, you know, when I get certain comments from people like, we really need to update, the city really needs to update their zoning code. We understand that, um, and we agree, but that is a heavy, big lift and something that we definitely want to work on uh, over the coming years. I think we're gonna be focused more on downtown uh, sooner rather than later. Um, but that does not mean that when issues come up and they're brought to our attention, we cannot do what we're doing right here, which is work on a tax amendment to try to better define things and try to provide more opportunities for business owners to do certain things in the appropriate location. Cause there's always the tension between, hey, as a business owner, I wanna do this, but also from a community standpoint, is that an appropriate use in this particular zoning or neighborhood? Um, so I just kinda wanted to highlight that from a bigger global uh, standpoint. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Peckerero.
Um, I, I acknowledge President Kabachi's uh, unparalleled knowledge of all things automatic before I, before I start. Let me just uh, say that I, I know this is gonna go to Planning and Zoning here. And one of the things I hope that they'll look at and I, our, our zoning map is so convoluted and tricky. I, I was trying to call it up, but I, for some of these, it's not coming up frequently. But I'm just, I'm just wondering out loud if, if automobile detailing shops and automobile repair and service shops are really uses we wanna have in our downtown business zone. I don't know what exactly what the boundaries are offhand, but I think that, that's something I like the Planning and Zoning Commission to think about a little bit because, you know, I think that as we think of the redevelopment of our downtown and we all know that once it uses in place, it's hard, impossible in many cases to remove it. You know, I'd just like to see, I'd like to have us think about, you know, what we want the future of downtown, the downtown business zone to be like. If those are really uses we wanna see there, on what could be a higher, better use. So that's just a point I'd like to.
If those are really uses we want to see there, on what could be a higher, better use. So that's just a point I'd like to suggest to Mr. Depot to share with the Planning Commission, Mr. Hoff, as he sits on the Planning Commission, uh, to give some thought.
Thank you, Mr. Peckerero. Anyone else wish to be heard on this issue? Okay, hearing no more discussion, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor of introducing uh resolution twenty, let me see here, this is, yeah, twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five dash oh one.
It's a secret.
Yep.
That's a ordinance.
It's a ordinance.
What did I say, resolution?
Yeah.
Man, I gotta get my act together up here.
It's your, it's your first time.
Yeah, exactly. Ordinance number twenty-five dash oh one. Uh, if, for in- introduction of ordinance twenty-five dash oh one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although any opposed? The ayes have it and the ordinance is introduced.
Thank you. Ordinance, President.
Yeah, Mr. Moore will lead up on it. Good, good. Okay, so, did you want to? About this, you want me to go and read it and then?
Yeah, well, just talk to him normally.
Now, got it. So, the second item of, of uh business under ordinances and resolutions is the adoption of ordinance twenty-five dash oh seven, the fiscal year budget amendment number one, and ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster, Maryland, amending the adopted budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five. Director of Finance Rogers.
That part will be played by me tonight, Mr. President. During the current.
That's what.
During this current fiscal year, the city has incurred additional expenses that exceed the current appropriation and therefore additional appropriations are necessary. A summary of the proposed additions is included in the ordinance in front of you and the funding sources as well. That recommends that the Mayor and Common Council adopt the amended budget appropriations as detailed in ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash oh seven. That concludes the staff report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's go ahead and get it on the floor and then we can discuss it. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh seven?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, so, I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-seven as revised by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Peckerero. Do I have a second to Mr. Peckerero's motion?
I'll second that.
Mr. Huff, with a second, is there any discussion related to the adoption of this ordinance?
Can I just get more clarity on what changed? None of the numbers changed, am I correct? It's just some of the whereas, falls, as I said.
Mr. President, our new legal counsel had a chance to look over the documents since this document bridged over the gap two different legal teams.
Ah.
And so some changes were made in the whereas sections. Um, and additionally now, our new legal team, who will be required to sign document now has their name instead of our former city's name. So housekeeping items, if you will. Uh, but again, just to be clear, none of the numbers have changed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Huff. Let's go ahead and call, uh, any other questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Peckero.
I'll just, just note that um, you know, we're, we're trying to uh to keep, to keep up keeping with our, our budget and, you know, so we're, we want to make sure that everything is wrapped up before we come into this full year. You're with us, President.
Thank you, Mr. Peckerero, and I appreciate your uh fine tuning on how we handle this in, in terms of the meeting also. Okay, uh, hearing no other discussion, I'll go ahead and call, uh, have, have a motion to adopt ordinance of uh ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh seven. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance is adopted. Very much, we're going to unfinished business, I have no unfinished business, new business. I have three items of new business, is that correct? And now I'm questioning my numbers that I put in here every time. Yeah, good. Uh, we have three items new business. Now, the first one uh will be a road to going closed meeting. So, Mr. Peckero.
Mr. President. I move that the Common Council adjourned to a closed meeting on Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty-five at the conclusion of the regular meeting in accordance with the general provisions article of the annotated code of Maryland, section three dash three zero five B seven, the consult council to obtain legal advice.
Thank you, Councilman Peckerero. Do I have a second?
Second.
I was seconded by Councilwoman Gilbert. All those in favor of going into closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is passed. Second item of business is the appointment of council committees by me. So, I am going to read off my sheet. Alright, so I'm gonna go down the sheet and read off the committee and then the members of that committee. Uh, all of these committees will have the mayor uh sitting on this committee with the exception of one, and that'll be the first one that I read, which is the Economic and Community Development Committee. That will be chaired by Hough, Vice Chair Kabachi, and Member Peckerero. Finance Committee will be Councilman Peckerero and Councilman Huff. Personnel Committee will be Councilwoman Gilbert and Councilman Peckerero. And I apologize, I shouldn't be saying who's chair, who is in finance, it'll be Chair Peckerero and Vice Chair Huff. Personnel will be Chair Gilbert. Vice Chair Peckerero. Public Safety will be chaired by Kabachi and Vice Chair will be Dayhoff. Public Works will be Peckerero and Vice Chair will be Huff. Parks and Rep will be chaired by Councilwoman Gilbert and Vice Chair Dayhoff. Technology will be chaired by Councilman Dayhoff and Vice Chair by Councilwoman Gilbert. Intergovernmental Relations will be chaired by Councilman Huff and Vice Chair will be Councilman Peckerero. And the Water and Sewer Allocation Committee, which is not on the list here, which operates basically the same as ECDC, but is a separate committee, um, will be chaired by Councilman Huff, Vice Chair by Kabachi, and Peckerero will be a member of that committee. And I now turn it over to the mayor for her. I believe this is your.
Mr. President, I only have one question to clarify.
Yeah.
With the council committees.
Yeah.
These are still considered, when we updated the rules last time, these are still considered ad hoc.
Correct.
Committees that you set forms, um.
Correct.
You're correct, okay. Yes.
Correct. They, they are, there, there's no vote, it's just an appoint.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly what.
Right, just wanted to clarify, so I'm just saying, maybe we could have asked.
Yeah, um. Okay, then we'll move on to uh the liaisons uh and board memberships that are recommended by the mayor. Madam Mayor, go ahead and make your recommendations and then we'll have a motion, a second, and approval of your recommendations.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much, uh, Council President. Um, for the uh Carroll County Arts Council, um, I will be the council liaison. Um, for that, uh, City Planning and Zoning, uh, Councilmember Huff, uh, who has served in that capacity already and is a valued member of that commission. Uh, the Magic Board, um, the Mid-Atlantic Gigabyte. Now, remember what the I stands for?
H.
In.
Innovative?
No, involv.
Innovation.
Innovation.
Yes.
Um, committee, um, or, um, Councilmember Dayhoff. Uh, Westminster Town Center Board requires three seats, um, myself, uh, Councilmember uh Peckerero and Ms. uh Sarah Impulse, our city administrator. Uh, Westminster Cemetery, uh, Councilmember Dayhoff. And then we have a new liaison, um, this round, uh, we thought that it would be a really good idea to have a local uh Maryland Municipal League or MML liaison who can serve as sort of like a conduit between our local Carroll County Chapter and the city of Westminster. And uh, I am requesting that Councilmember Gilbert fill that role.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I have a motion to approve the mayor's recommendations for the liaisons and boards?
I have so moved. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Do I have a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Peckerero. Is there any discussion related to the mayor's recommendations? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving them as read by Mayor Becker, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it and they are appointed. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Good. Now, we'll move on to departmental reports. Impulse.
Thank you, Sarah. Couple of housekeeping items, uh, next Thursday, June nineteenth. It's a federal holiday, it's also a city holiday, Juneteenth. Just a reminder that, um, city offices will be closed on June fifteenth. And uh, Mr. President, I'm sure I'm gonna steal your thunder here, but as a reminder to everyone, um, there will be no council meeting on the twenty-third of June, uh, because we'll be at a conference. Alright, let's, let's get on to the departments. Uh, Ms. Gruber, tell us about beer and barbecue this weekend.
Yes, so we are looking forward to uh our second stroll, the stroll season, beer and barbecue this Saturday. Um, as we always do, we are evaluating the weather forecast and as they've been very tumultuous lately, so um, we're always working on our secondary plans in the event that we need to react to whatever Mother Nature brings our way. Um, we did struggle this past weekend through our pickle in the park tournament. Um, we actually initially were scheduled for the prior weekend, which got rained out and our rain date almost got rained out, so, um, we put the tournament on a three-hour rain delay and we were able to quickly dry the courts with an army of backpack blowers and squeegees and beach towels um, to get everybody playing by twelve noon. It did really extend the day. Um, we were here quite late to get all of the games in and then we were staring down a not-so-great forecast for Sunday, which would have been our uh doubles tournament day and we ended up canceling Sunday's games. So we got half of our tournament in and, and we were okay with that because it was better than no tournament at all. Um, speaking of pickleball, our registration is now open for our summer leagues in City Park. This league does play on Wednesday evenings and we still have spots available, so if you know of anyone that's interested and wants to play some pickleball on Wednesday nights, send them to our group page, please. Um, and the only other thing I have to report to you this evening is our Westminster Summer Day Camp is ready to kick off on Monday, June sixteenth and that will run for eleven weeks. And we are excited to share that all of our weeks are absolutely full with waiting lists, so we could um, accept more campers if we had more capacity to do so. And that concludes my report unless there are questions.
Mr. President, are there any questions for the Reparation and Park Department?
One quick one, if somebody else does. How were the participants related to not having the full time? Were they okay with, with it, that they want their money back or part of their money back or how, what was the attitude like?
Um, generally, it was fair and, um, there were very few people that were upset this weekend. There were more people that were upset the prior weekends because we advertised a rain date. And so when they said they couldn't make the rain date, we said, well, you don't get a refund because we're still holding the tournament. So that's where we had, um, more of an issue. So everyone was settled down by this weekend and I think they saw, you know, what we were dealing with and we're grateful for uh the decisions that were made.
I don't think any of us heard from anybody, so it could have been that bad. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll move on now to the Human Resources Department's Brian.
Good evening. Um, I just have one update and that is to say that we successfully completed open enrollment and we got one hundred percent participation and response back from everyone, um, which is a feat in and of itself and I want to thank each and every one of you for your participation as well as the staff and the department head that really assisted in a collaborative way to make sure that this was a successful, um, open enrollment season, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Are there any questions for the Human Resources Department? Hearing none, we'll move on to the IT Department, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore, I'll keep it short, um, initial normal stuff that we do every day. We're at the end of the year process for us getting orders in and renewals and all our big products renewed. Um, and we're about to kick off our, the IT portion of the finance audit next Wednesday, so we're prepared for that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any questions for the IT Department?
I would just like to compliment Mr. Moore, I often do. I needed his assistance earlier today with an issue I was having on my computer. Anyway, no matter what it was, within five seconds I had an email right back telling me exactly what to do. Boom, done, fixed. He's amazing.
We don't call him the chief problem solver for nothing.
Thank you.
Welcome. Sorry, Mr. Depot, now I'm gonna have to live up to that. I'm gonna move on to the Department, Mr. Depot.
On June third, the Portis zoning appeals approved BZI case number twenty-five oh three. An application by the property owner requesting a special exception approval for an automobile sales use at two seventy-nine East Main Street. This is the Pizza Bowl property. It's already, already an automobile repair shop there. That gentleman wants to sell some vehicles there as well. On June fourth, the Historic District Commission approved pre-construction historic district tax credit application TC twenty-five oh three for one forty-seven West Main Street to repair siding and paint the exterior of the building. The HCC also continued its discussions on its implementation plan and the nation's two-hundred-and-fiftieth preparations. Due to the holiday, the Planning and Zoning Commission's June nineteenth meeting has been rescheduled to June twenty-sixth. However, the agenda has not been set for this meeting at this time, but we will have a meeting. There are some applications that should make it to the meeting. And that completes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Mr. President, are there any questions for the Planning Department? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Housing Department, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, good evening. I want to thank the mayor, also, and city administrator, HR department, for a, in addition to my staff. It's much, very, very appreciated. And uh, she's transitioning very well. She's acclimating herself to the things that, that she needs to do and, and, and I think uh it's, it's a, it's a good hype. Um, in addition to the new staff person, we are also continuing to field the calls for code violations. The weather this week is grass. And the more it rains, then the more grass and recalls we get. But we continue to respond and, and, and so far the vast majority of the, the people we send relations to respond positively and, and comply. So, um, we'll continue to do that. That's all I have. And if, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Are there any questions for the Housing Department? Hearing none, we will wrap things up as we always do with the Police Department and Chief Level.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. As Council President Kabachi mentioned, the Special Olympics torch run takes place tomorrow morning. It will uh conclude with a ceremony at McDaniel College at eleven AM. Um, we had the quarterly police accountability board meeting this morning, uh, with, at the Carroll County Office Building. Uh, the only real relevant um topic brought up other than the uh discussion of the last quarter's activities was a um, a new bill that kind of closes a loophole in the timeframe that, um, charges must be brought when there's a internal investigation that has a sustained complaint. And I think that was uh put into place to clean up there, um, if there should happen to be a criminal investigation that's taking place concurrently with the administrative investigation. Because of the fact that certain aspects of the administrative investigation have to take a backseat to the criminal investigation, they had to um spell out a change in timeframe allowance for that purpose. Um, and finally, uh, the uh RNC generator has been placed behind the uh Police Department. Um, the, the switch has been installed on the wall and the only remaining um aspects to this project are uh fueling it and connecting the uh electricity in the switch up, which they'll be doing shortly, so. Looking forward to having that completed. And that completes my report. If I have any questions.
Are there any questions for the Police Department?
Where are they gonna hold the torch runs?
I was gonna say. Do you know if there's a ceremony?
Yeah, because it's, can't be in the stadium, because I think they're working on it, right? Didn't they?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was told.
They're trying to be there. So I guess we'll just work on it.
Uh, if I find differently, I'll, really.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. If it changes.
Yep, I'll, I'll send.
Yeah, let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Impulse.
Finally, Mr. President, I, I want to take, on behalf of staff, I want to take the, an opportunity to thank Councilmember Peckerero for his leadership as Council President and to welcome Council President Kabachi and to give us all a minute to get used to all those words at the same time. Uh, we're here to serve you and we're, and we're, we appreciate your leadership, Councilmember Peckerero, and we're looking forward to working with you, President Kabachi. Mr. President, that concludes the departmental reports.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So the final item on our agenda is citizens' comments. When we. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues pertaining to tonight's agenda or any other city issues, for citizens not attending the public meeting, we invite you to send your comments, your concerns via email to comments@westminster, westminsternd.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. Commenters should include their address and phone number with their comments. We will now invite comments from anyone who is present this evening. This is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts and concerns with the mayor and council. Excuse me. Our role at this point is to listen to the comments and respond as appropriately as appropriate after consultation with staff and each other. Now, is there anyone here in tonight's meeting that wishes to be heard? Please give us your name and address for the record. You're the only guest. Do you have anything? All right.
We all look that way.
We're all looking at you.
Okay, hearing no comments, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, adjourn. This concludes the agenda and meeting. Our next regular meeting, as Miss Impulse pointed out, is not going to be until July fourteenth, and that's due to MML. We will not have a forum for the July twenty-third meeting. Uh, so, I'm sorry, June twenty-third meeting, uh, we will not have a forum. So without objection, we.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you be coming back into session tonight after the closed session?
No, we will not be coming into, uh, session after the closed session. Thank you, Mr. Impulse. Okay, hearing nothing else, we are adjourned.